All right, it's the time of 6:30. I will call to order the Cedarburg School Board meeting of Monday, April 22, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg as well as the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unreguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item on our agenda is, as you may know, there was a recent election to this first school board. We have the same members here, but we have to reconstitute the board every year, or the officers every year, sorry. So I will be taking nominations for the, we've got president, vice president, clerk, treasurer, and secretary. So I think we can just, if we're down to pass this, kind of go down the line with, starting with the president. Are there any nominations for board president?
I'll nominate Kate Nutzel.
I will second. I will nominate Dave Creer.
I second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, so we've got two candidates, Creer and Nutzel. And I think we're doing the written ballot, so write your choice on the ballot, for vice president. Any nominations?
I would nominate Laura Strobel.
and Brenda will pick them up and compile them.
I second.
I will nominate Nick Silbaji.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got two candidates, Laura Strobel and Nick Silbaji. Will you use the same procedure?
Thank you. I have just said.
And I have five votes for Mr. Creer and two votes for Ms. Nutzel.
Thank you.
And I have five votes for Mrs. Nutzel and two votes for Mr. Kincaid.
All right, thank you. So it's Mrs. Strobel. The next officer is clerk. Any nominations for clerk?
I nominate Kate Nutzel.
I will second that.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself.
I will second.
All right, we've got two nominations. We've got Miss Kincaid and Miss Nutzel.
Thanks.
Five votes for Mrs. Nutzel and two votes for Mr. Kincaid.
All right, thank you. So it's Mrs. Strobel. The next officer is clerk. Any nominations for clerk?
I nominate Kate Nutzel.
I will second that.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Connie Kincaid.
Can we do a nomination and a second, though? I thought we have to nominate ourselves. There needs to be a second. That's not that person.
No, you can second yourself.
Does that sound right?
You can second.
I'll second it.
All right, so we've got two nominees. We've got Sharlin and Kincaid.
Thank you.
Five votes for Mrs. Nutzel and two votes for Mr. Kincaid.
All right, so it's Mrs. Sharlin. And then we have secretary. That's currently Brenda. I'll happily nominate Brenda.
I will second that.
Any other nominations? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, passes as well. So we have a new slate of officers. President Creer, Vice President Strobel, Clerk Nutzel, Treasurer Sharlin, and Brenda Roth is our secretary. Continue, that's our secretary. Very good. Okay, next on the agenda is the board and committee calendar. It says that's for me.
Yeah, it's up there.
Oh, there it is. So this has been circulated to everybody?
Just need a recommendation.
Yeah, we just need, any discussion changes if you like it, if you're good with it, we'll take a motion to approve it.
I would make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions?
Yes, so the, everything looks pretty good to me. The couple of questions I had, I did ask earlier of administration. The one area where I would like to see a change is in our policy section. We have two standing meetings currently, which is the practice that's been done for quite some time. I would like to see a third. I feel that there would be a benefit in a third policy meeting so that neither, that we're not rushing through. What seems to happen is that we have one meeting with many, many, many policies, another with a shorter amount, and I believe a third meeting would help us with this. It sounds like our NEOLAP rep is not by the hour, so this past meeting, there were some policies that I would have liked to have heard more about from committee members, but it felt like that meeting was on a time constraint. So I feel a good compromise that would help board members, administration, stakeholders, would be a third meeting added to this calendar. I know it's hard to figure that out right here on the spot, so my, I'm sharing my input, my desire as a board member, and that's where that's at right now.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea. The question is, do, because usually these meetings coincide with updates you get from NEOLAP. So how would that work, Dr. Clark?
Well, we could always put a new one at a third meeting. You know, we have different policies that board members have recommendations on, administrations have recommendations on at various times. I actually do think we had a third one last year in August, because there was something we needed to have updated prior to the start of the school year. But again, it doesn't matter to me when we would do that, but August makes sense to me.
Yeah, because if we, unless we're just getting like a big influx of changes from NEOLAP, that, you know, we're going to have, we're going to be stuck in a long meeting.
Correct.
But yeah, I think that's a, that's a fine idea.
So we can look for, Brenda and I can take a look and try and find the time. It looks like most of those are happening, I think, the second Wednesday?
Oh, our, the just the policies?
Yeah.
Yeah, we second.
Yeah, so unless we want to look and say the second Wednesday of August, because we have a curriculum committee meeting on the first, I mean, on the first Wednesday, which is the seventh, so we could throw in there August 14th. Yeah. At least from a committee meeting, board meeting, I don't see anything that, well, that conflicts. Let me just do a quick look.
Because our last one was in April, so, yeah, that'd be good timing.
It would be something I would appreciate, so I, yeah, just giving consideration to our previous policy meetings and what's potentially still on the table, that I haven't heard it as much as I would like to about.
Okay. Any other suggestions, questions, proposals?
I have a question. So if the motion right now is to have it as is, and the second was as is, and we've just discussed a change, do we need a different motion on the table and make this motion now for the amended date? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we edit this current calendar to include August 14th for policy meetings.
I will second that.
Is there anything else? Anyone else have any other thoughts, concerns, ideas? No. Okay, you've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Dave, sorry, I didn't say aye yet. Aye.
Thank you. Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Next we have recognitions.
Well, now we have to take a motion. Now we have to vote on the whole calendar as well, because that was just the amendment.
Oh, I thought it was with the amendments.
I think the motion was to accept it as edited with the included one. So as long as, as long as everyone's fine with that, I think we're good, but you can go back.
I'll be there.
All right.
All right, I think we now have the.
Recognitions. State proclamations from, of our Strobel.
The state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamations. April 6th through the 12th is the week of the young child. April 7th to the 13th is National Library Week. April, the whole month of April is for the School Library Month and also the month of the military child. And all proclamations are available on the district's board docs webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this says we.
Dr. Clark. I can read it, yeah.
I'm going to keep going.
Okay.
So you have winter sports recognitions. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you very much. Excited to share the outstanding accomplishments of our student athletes. Before we get to our student athletes, whoops, we have a few, a few events that occurred over the winter. We had our Athletic Hall of Fame ceremony, so we had Coach Jack Fries, who was inducted. He's a two-time member now as a coach and athlete, so he coached here for 44 years. We had Josie Stever, who was an outstanding soccer player. Then we had Dr. Darrell Herrick, who was a former superintendent, who was instrumental in our athletic facilities that we now have. And then Logan Louders, who was an incredible football player. And then, just wanted to include this, we've been doing this the past seven years here, where our elementary and middle schools will, the players that went to those schools will recognize a staff member, which has turned into a very fun tradition. And not only that, you know, for representing or recognizing our outstanding staff, it brings together our schools and our community here. So I really appreciate that. You know, we have Dan here, appreciate all of our principals that take part in this and getting their staff and their students there. We have a great turnout for these events here, so just wanted to show this. And then we had the 20th anniversary of the Nikki Dodens game that we played, so that's in the upper left-hand corner. And then this is something, we have Maggie Bowland, who is our athletic department intern. She came to me with this idea, which has turned into a very positive idea here, because there's been a lot of talk about it. We have a lot of alumni throughout the district here, and I don't know why Mr. Bow is shaking his head here right now, because he almost broke the internet. So, you know, I've had students come up to me and people around the community, and they're just like, I can't believe how many staff members, you know, went to CHS. So just showing a couple here, and you get to see, you know, some of the mullets and different hairdos that were back in the day here. So they grow up so fast. So, you know, maybe some of these ladies right here will be doing this sometime down, down the road here. And then we just had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the softball field, and this game would not have been played without turf. So that was fun, and, you know, we've had some weather issues, and just has been no worries at all now that we do have turf. And, you know, our teams have been out there in early winter and very early in the spring, they've been practicing out there at times they would never be. So this was a lot of fun. This one was very special given the weather circumstances. And it actually turned out to be a great day. It was just the weather we had the day before. Our JV field was completely underwater. And then we had the following morning, we had this ceremony for our baseball field, and you see, you know, for both of them, our youth programs were there, and then our baseball team's there. So this, this was a lot of fun and very special. And getting into our student athletes now, so we have, we have girls hockey, so we have Jillian Billsborough, who was first team, and Elizabeth Bowers, who was honorable mention. And then Jillian also has the record for career goals. And then for our dance team, they had a great season as they advanced to state. And then moving on to girls basketball, so we have first team, we have Mary Strobel, and then honorable mention, we have Mimi Hart and Sarah Helm. And then Mary also holds the record right now for single points in a game. And we also have Dave Ross, who is, he just retired after 23 seasons, so he had a great run here at CHS, and we're very thankful for his dedication and efforts. And then moving on to swim and dive, we had these four individuals here, Tommy Grayson, Sam, and Evan. They all advanced to state, and Evan did an outstanding job there placing second. And then we had Amit, and I jotted down some of his stats here, and he'd be very mad if I read these off here, but I'm going to do it anyhow, for his career. He had, between boys and girls here, he had 18 conference championships, eight state runner-up, and then one state championship. He just was an outstanding coach, and beyond that, I have never heard any parent, any athlete say anything negative about him. The culture he created around our swim program was second to none here. So we'll miss him. Obviously, he's not going anywhere. He'll still be teaching here, but he was, he was a great one. So did just outstanding things for our boys and swim, for boys and girls swim programs here. And then moving on to ski, we had Max Grubelane, advanced to state. And then boys' basketball, they were regional champs. And then for our accolades here, Logan Zare was first team, Griffin French was third team, and then Jack Dykstra was honorable mention, and you see Griffin has a record for season assists. And then Logan is continuing his career as he's a junior. He eclipsed 1,000 points, and Jack broke 1,000 points in his second-to-last game in his high school career, which was pretty neat. And boys' hockey, we had Brady and Nick. They both were honorable mention. And then for gymnastics, our team, they qualified as a team, and then Kalen and McKenna qualified as individuals. And I believe they placed eighth at state as a team. And then we have mock trial here. They qualified for state. And, actually, I'm sorry here, this is gymnastics here. I'm sorry here, next slide, I'm one slide ahead here. So this is a picture of our gymnastics team. And then we have mock trial right here, and Dan Irwin does an outstanding job with them, and they've been to state now back-to-back years. And then U-Ball, they're, these are the big guys on campus right now. They were state runner-up, and they've, they've just done a great job. And Darwin Peters, who is their coach, has done a great job, you know, starting this team, and there's a lot of positive energy around them. And the student support and community support has also been great. And then Forensics was just competing at state this past weekend. And then we have our all-state recipients. So we have, for girls' hockey, Jillian Billsborough, and for boys' basketball, Logan Zare, and a familiar name around here for girls' basketball, Mary Strobel. And she had just an outstanding career here, coming back from injury, and then unfortunately sustaining another injury here, but, you know, remaining positive all the way through here, so I do want to note that. So that concludes our presentation here. Not going too far ahead here on our winter sports. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Ted, thank you very much.
I don't have questions, but I did have comment. I am really liking the, whoever's working on the styling of the posts and the readability. The one comment I have is for when we're using that font, that's kind of a cursively one.
Sure.
It can be a little hard to read. So my one feedback would be just from the perspective of, some of them may have a hard time with that, maybe looking at a different font. But otherwise, it's beautiful.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, now we've gone to the consent agenda. Dr. Clark, he's leaving the table.
Get my clicker.
Sorry.
I thought that was the end of the consent agenda. No, no.
All right, oops, consent agenda. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on March 20, 2024, the budget and finance report, which includes a summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we are seeking board approval on the hiring of Marissa Holchen as the new choir and general music teacher at Webster Middle School. And we are also seeking approval for three resignations, Diane Lazar, family and consumer education teacher at CHS, Taylor Veenendal, kindergarten teacher at Thorson, and after 10 years of exceptional leadership at Thorson Elementary School as the principal, the resignation of Angela Little, who is moving on to become the director of student learning in McQuanigo.
All right, so I have a motion on the consent agenda.
Dave, can I make a motion to portion out the consent agenda for votes?
Sure.
I'd like, I'd like to abstain on one portion, but not the others.
All right.
So can I motion to approve A, B, A and B at this time, and then a separate motion for C?
All right, we've got a motion to approve A and B.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion, any abstentions? No. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So now I'm looking for a motion on consent agenda, item C.
So moved.
Moved, approved?
Yes. I will second.
We've got a motion and a second on the item C, the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Abstention.
Two abstentions and five approvals. And any, anyone against? No one against. All right. Very good, thank you. Superdude, eight, any jump ahead? Nope, superdude, ten minutes for court.
All right, board members, each of you have been provided the Cedarburg School District Pupil Non-Discrimination Self-Evaluation Report. This report is a requirement per Wisconsin Administrative Code PI 9.06. The purpose of the self-evaluation is to review the following areas: School Board Policies and Administrative Procedures, Enrollment Trends in Classes and Programs, Methods, Practices, Curriculum and Materials Used in Instruction, Counseling, and Pupil Assessment and Testing, Trends and Patterns of Disciplinary Actions, Including Suspensions, Expulsions, and Handling of People Harassment, Participation Trends and Patterns, and School District Support of Athletics, Extracurricular and Recreational Activities, Trends and Patterns in Awarding Scholarships and Other Forms of Recognition and Achievement Provided or Administered by the District, School District Efforts to Achieve Equality of Educational Opportunity and Non-Discrimination, School District Technology, Including Electronic Communications by School District Staff. In completing this report, the district utilized two separate time periods in which comments from pupils, teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and residents were accepted. The notices were placed in the news graphic. The district did not receive any comments. Any, any questions or?
No, no action on that.
Would it be possible in the future, instead of just the notice in the news graphic, to actually have an email sent out to districts, you know, parents, employees, and staff, so that we could have feedback?
Sure, yep.
So just to follow up to that, for that email, I know it was discussed previously about potentially having it in the, which one is it? The district week, monthly update? Which, which is it, Dr. Clark? There's one that goes out.
Yeah, someone could care. And what do we call the one to the parents? What's the name of that? The district, district newsletter.
District newsletter, okay. So. But otherwise, it's beautiful.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, now we've gone to the consent agenda, Dr. Clark. He's leaving the table.
Get my clicker.
Sorry.
I thought that was the end of the consent agenda. No, no.
All right, oops, consent agenda. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on March 20th, 2024, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we are seeking board approval on the hiring of Marissa Holchen as the new choir and general music teacher at Webster Middle School. And we are also seeking approval for three resignations, Diane Lazar, family and consumer education teacher at CHS, Taylor Veenendal, kindergarten teacher at Thorson, and after 10 years of exceptional leadership at Thorson Elementary School as the principal, the resignation of Angela Little, who is moving on to become the director of student learning in McQuanigo.
All right, so I have a motion on the consent agenda.
Dave, can I make a motion to portion out the consent agenda for votes?
Sure.
I'd like, I'd like to abstain on one portion, but not the others.
All right.
So, can I motion to approve A, B, A and B at this time, and then a separate motion for C?
All right, we've got a motion to approve A and B.
I will second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that motion? Any abstentions? No, okay, that motion passes unanimously. So now I'm looking for a motion on consent agenda item C.
So moved.
Moved, approved?
Yes. I will second.
We've got a motion and a second on the item C of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Abstention.
Two abstentions and five approvals. And any, anyone against? No one against, all right. Very good, thank you. Superdude, eight? Can I jump ahead? Nope, so I'm ten minutes from the floor.
All right, board members, each of you have been provided the Cedarburg School District Pupil Non-Discrimination Self-Evaluation Report. This report is a requirement per Wisconsin Administrative Code PI 9.06. The purpose of the self-evaluation is to review the following areas: school board policies and administrative procedures, enrollment trends in classes and programs, methods, practices, curriculum, and materials used in instruction, counseling, and pupil assessment and testing, trends and patterns of disciplinary actions, including suspensions, expulsions, and handling of pupil harassment, participation trends and patterns, and school district's support of athletics, extracurricular, and recreational activities, trends and patterns in awarding scholarships and other forms of recognition and achievement provided or administered by the district, school district efforts to achieve equality of educational opportunity and non-discrimination, school district technology, including electronic communications by school district staff. In completing this report, the district utilized two separate time periods in which comments from pupils, teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and residents were accepted. The notices were placed in the news graphic. The district did not receive any comments. Any, any questions or?
No, did you get action on that?
No, no action on that.
Would it be possible in the future, instead of just the notice in the news graphic, to actually have an email sent out to districts, you know, parents, employees, and staff, so that we could have feedback?
Sure, yep.
So, just to follow up to that, for that email, I know it was discussed previously about potentially having it in the, which one is it, the district week, monthly update? Which, which is it, Dr. Clark? There's one that goes out.
Yeah, someone called Karen, what do we call the one to the parents? What's the name of that, the district newsletter?
District newsletter, okay. So...
Yeah, and the self-evaluation report, it's once every five years? So we'll make note of that, Karen will remember too.
I'd like it reflected somewhere officially, rather than relying on her.
We can't, we can't make a promise that, that we'll do it that way, but you'll note that that was a request.
Yep.
Because we're not gonna be probably the same board at that time.
So this one doesn't need a?
No.
There's nothing attached to it as far as an action or anything?
Correct.
Just that two board members have requested that it is communicated in a different way than the news graphic?
Yep.
Or in a way that it's in addition to news graphic, because that has to happen that way, right?
I believe it's best to do that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right, then going on, this evening, I am pleased to introduce to the board, Chris Hart. Chris, Chris is the CHS College and Career and Community Services Administrative Assistant, and leads the CHS Community Service Office. She and some of her students will provide an overview of the CHS Community Services Program.
Hello, I am Chris Hart. I won't take up much time, because I truly am not the face of community service. We have an exceptional offering for our students and our community by having an office here that has been in existence for 35 years. If you read the stats up there really quickly, that I just ran the numbers this week, over half of our student body has reported some form of community service hours. That's over 50,000 hours, equates to over $300,000 in wages at minimum wage, very impressive. I started a year ago in December, last spring, I formed a community service leadership team, because again, community service isn't about me. We have such a phenomenal group of young adults that love the interfacing with our community, so I'm gonna give them all a chance to talk about their experience with community service. These are four members of like a 40-person team, and again, it only represents a small portion of our student body, but really, really phenomenal people. So, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Anna Levy, I'm a senior, and I joined the community service leadership team, because I've loved to volunteer all throughout high school. And I first learned about volunteering from my grandma, who started this program back in the 90s, and I'm really proud to still have it going today, because I know not all schools have a community service office like this, but it's really important for a school to get all students involved, and we're able to spread the word about events. And this year, we had the Thanksgiving dinner for elderly individuals in the community to come, which was an awesome event, and we also did a holiday card drive, distributing holiday cards to senior citizens. So, I love being part of community service, and it's been awesome to meet a bunch of cool people and give back to the community.
Hi, I'm Lauren, I'm also a senior, part of the community service leadership team. I've been volunteering since before freshman year, but one of the biggest reasons I joined the team was because it is a great way to give back to the community and to meet such cool people in our community. One of my favorite events from this year, actually, just a few weeks ago, was the Mel's Charity Dinner and Dance, which is essentially a nonprofit organization prom for adults with disabilities. So, so cool to be able to organize behind the scenes, and then finally be able to go and then meet everyone, and then dance with everyone, and just see the cool turnout, and then, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia, I'm a junior on the leadership team, and my favorite part of this team is being able to make a direct impact, just besides the volunteering itself, because there's so many events that we come up with, like the singing telegrams, it started with a video that just popped up on social media, and we adapted it to fit our school and our needs, and it just shows how much of an impact individually we can have on the whole community.
Hello, first of all, thank you for allowing us to come and speak tonight, it's always a great opportunity to have representatives from our community service leadership team get to talk to you all, because that's what this is really about, reaching out to the community. My name is Marissa D'Amico, and I'm a senior on the community service leadership team. And I think for me, the, I've been involved in community service, I would like to say, my whole life, in some ways, whether I chose to or not, but now I can say that I choose to every single time, because for me, community service is not what you are, you are giving your time, but it's also the things that you inherently receive from giving your time. For me, one of the most influential things about this, having this office here, and now having a larger location for the community service office, is the opportunity for students like myself to be able to expose themselves to learning things that aren't taught inside the walls of a classroom. There's some skills that you don't learn while sitting in class and taking notes, and I think that the majority of those skills that I've taken have been from community service. And also, community service and having such an amazing office with so many opportunities in a variety of fields, has allowed me to actually figure out my future career path. I would like to talk a little bit about one of our educators here at Seaburg High School, Senior Casey, he actually really impacted my life with community service, that by promoting me to go to the office and look at translating for Spanish-speaking individuals at the Port Washington Food Pantry, that when I went there, I actually realized that my future career path, I hope to study political science and international affairs for pre-law, that while working with these Spanish-speaking individuals, the majority of them who are undocumented, I realized that the area of law I once looked at going into completely changed, and I'm looking more towards immigration law now because of that. And all of that goes back to community service, of the people that I've met and interacted with, but also just being able to have the opportunity and having it so feasible to us students here to have an office such as this. And I hope, it's my hope that now that I'm graduating, that several years down the line, just as Anna said, that her grandmother started it here, that it will continue to flourish, and we'll have a strong department for students down the line, and just so that we can give back to our community as we've received. Thank you.
I do have questions, if that's okay. So, first, do other board members have this slide in your, are you able to see it on your devices? I don't have it as an attachment, so can it be added as an attachment to, for this meeting? Thanks, Bunda. So going into this meeting, I didn't have much to look at ahead of time, and so I apologize for me kind of going back while you were talking, because I wanted to see a little bit more. And it sounds like a handful of the events I have liked on Facebook have been put together by this team, so thank you. It's awesome to see the faces of some, right? There's always a larger group, but individuals that are putting their talents, their good efforts, all of that to use for our community, so thank you so much. For the, the community service office, it's been, been in existence for 35 years, but am I understanding this right, that it now has its own room, Dr. Clark? Or what is the, what's the difference between when it was started versus what, how it's going on right now?
So, it's always had its own space.
Okay.
Last December, it was made, two jobs basically were combined, so I, one of my heads is college and careers, and the other is, is community service.
Okay.
But they've always had employees running the community, you know, adults running the community service office, it's just been in different locations. It's currently right here in the upper IMC, which makes it a space, a much more collaborative space, it's a larger space.
Okay.
But it's a very fluid space for students to come in and out during the day. If you want, if you walk into the office, you'll see a, a big posting that allows students to pop in, check out community service offerings that are happening, and also then it's a resource space for college and careers.
And is the, are the individuals behind you all of the members of the service leadership team?
Yeah.
This is everyone on that team?
Nope, nope.
So a reflection, okay.
Yep, just a reflection.
Okay.
We have about 40 members. A survey goes out, it'll go out again in the beginning of the year, so that the incoming eighth graders, or freshmen, will have an opportunity to join, anybody can join.
Okay.
I mean, it could be 100 people. So we, we've never had a community service leadership team, that's new. I implemented that last spring, because when I came in, I, you know, I realized that I'm truly not the face of community service, it's not about me, it's about them, and they're way more talented than I am.
I do want to know more about the singing telegram, but if anyone is open to sharing a little bit more about that.
It actually was, Ella was one of the, the ideas, idea makers behind singing telegrams, so what we did was, Ella, do you want to speak about it?
Sure.
Or do you want me to?
I, well, what questions do you have about it?
Great, I'm wondering if this was specific to singing telegrams that were sent to staff or students within the buildings, or if it extended out further? I'm just kind of curious where that stands.
So, it was strictly within just the school, so we had it over a course of, I believe it was three, two days of singing?
Two days.
And so, the students would, would buy raffle tickets for either a fellow student or a teacher, and at the end, we picked about 10 students and/or staff members to then receive the singing telegrams, where we would go at the beginning of each block, and small groups of choir individuals would come in and we'd sing them a little song for Valentine's Day, get them all hyped up.
Awesome, very creative.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions, again, I'm sorry for kind of looking, glancing while you were speaking, I'll look forward to seeing that slide when it's added, and I appreciate all of you and everyone who's not here, but is part of that team.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'd just like to add, thank you for, for coming here tonight, it's, it's great to, to hear from individuals who are involved, you know, in these, in these kind of activities, and really appreciate your time coming out tonight, I know you probably have other things that are more fun to do than come talk to us.
Amy Shet.
Yeah, stuff like that, those are more fun, yeah.
I'd also like to mention that, I think it was about a month ago, Ms. Hart and her team, more than just the four here, actually presented at the Rotary Club, and the Rotarians were very impressed with everything, and so that was, that was a great opportunity and great presentation also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your excuse to your home.
All right, that takes us to public comment. I have three people signed up for public comment, and so is there anyone else who's gonna be speaking besides the three? So who's, who's gonna be giving comment? Raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, four people, okay. So I gotta read a disclaimer, and then I'm, I've got three names, so I'm just gonna call up in order I have here, so, here we go. Any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student, or student enrolled in the district may comment during the public comment portion of a meeting per Board Policy 0167.3. For this meeting, the community may address the board during the public comment section of the meeting regarding topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the school board. Individuals making public comment are reminded that they are not immune from legal consequences related to their speech, this includes, but is not limited to liability for speech that is contrary to the privacy reputational or due process rights of others, such as defamation or making false claims. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience, as this is a public meeting, and is expected everyone in attendance will conduct themselves in a respectful and courteous manner that models appropriate behavior for our students. Speech or conduct that is threatening or disruptive is prohibited in accordance with School Board Policy 0167.3. Comments by individual speakers shall not exceed three minutes in duration. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, please state the topic upon which you will be commenting. If you are under the age of 18, or are a student in Cedarburg schools, please only state your first name. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the district's website. So we have the timer up here, the first speaker on the list here is Jamie Mitchell.
You know, I'd actually like to let her go first.
Oh, okay, so...
I'm sorry, I was going, I didn't have to.
Are you, are you Sasha Lee?
No, my name is Jamie Vassar, but I was going, when I had to, I didn't have a question.
Oh, okay, then why don't you go ahead?
Okay.
Just trying to be efficient.
No worries. So my name is Jamie Vassar, I live at W 73 N 1161 Augusta Lane here in Cedarburg. My family and I just moved here in September from North Carolina, not really sure why I would want to do that, but you can blame my husband. I'm the proud mother of an 11-year-old daughter who attends Webster Middle School, and unfortunately, we haven't had the smoothest transition here. So, we moved here from North Carolina again in September, my 11-year-old daughter was misidentified as a transgender student, and when I say misidentified, what I mean is, based off of her dress and how she acts, students in her school were calling her a boy. And teachers and administrators knew that she was a girl, and when segregated into groups, it was escalated to the school administration, and they asked my daughter how she chose to identify. Again, my daughter's 11, she was embarrassed, she said, "Mom, how do I tell people that I'm a girl when they think that I'm a boy?" And she told the school that she knows she's a girl, she does not identify as a boy, but she did not want to do anything about it. So the school did not contact me at that time, they didn't make me aware of it, but what they did do was tell teachers to stop identifying her as a girl. They said not use any gender-specific pronouns. So for six months, my daughter was at school, not using the bathroom all day, going through puberty as a female, not using the bathroom all day, there's certain things that happened during the day, she didn't do that. She wasn't carrying a water bottle, so she didn't have to drink, she didn't participate in extracurricular school activities, she just changed her whole lifestyle. And so one day, the incident became involved with another student, was like kind of questioning her, and they were gonna out her, and then the school finally decides to get me involved as a parent. The question is not whether my daughter identifies as a boy or a girl, and that's not the question for any student. The question is, for children that are 11, 10, 9, 12, how do we place that responsibility in their hands, and then expect them to deal with the pressure and the fallout that comes from that, without including their parents? And so when I asked what the official policy was, or, you know, how you, how the school chooses to deal with it, I was told that, you know, they can't out a student, which I understand, but you're not technically out a student, outing a student, how do you also protect that student, make sure their parents are well, aware, and make sure that they have some type of social structures outside of the school to make sure that their overall mental well-being is okay? Because for six months, that was the anxiety that was created for my daughter. And I have no further comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Jamie Michelle, did I pronounce that right?
You did, actually, which is really surprising, everybody says Mitchell, but you got it right. My name is Jamie Michelle, I live at N 49 W 6205 Western Road. Good evening, my name is Jamie Michelle, I stand before you today not only as the founder of Gays Against Groomers, which is a nonprofit comprised of LGBT people fighting against the sexualization, indoctrination, and medicalization of children happening under the guise of LGBTQIA+ but also as a concerned advocate for the rights and dignity of every student within our educational institutions, within our educational institutions. It has recently come to my attention, and undoubtedly to the attention of many here, of a deeply troubling situation that has unfolded within the walls of your middle school. A sixth-grade student, for six long months, endured the profound discomfort of being treated, called, and thought of as a male by her peers, faculty, and staff, simply because she had an athletic style and short hair, a style that was once called a tomboy. As a tomboy lesbian myself, it hurts to imagine the daily struggle, the internal conflict, and the emotional toll that she must have endured during this time. The student did not enroll in the school as a male, she did not identify as a male, yet she was consistently treated as one without regard for her true identity. She was so confused by the pressure, she started using a private bathroom. This is not just a matter of administrative oversight, but a profound violation of parental rights and the student's dignity and autonomy. What is most alarming about this situation is not just the initial mistake, but the prolonged silence that followed. How is it possible that an institution entrusted with the care and education of our children failed to recognize and rectify such a fundamental error for half of a year? And why? And why, in the name of all that is just and fair, was her mother kept in the dark about her daughter's identity crisis? Let us be clear. Communication between the school and parents is not a mere formality. It is a fundamental pillar of our educational system. Parents entrust their children to you, expecting that they will not only be educated but also nurtured and respected. The student may or may not grow to realize she is gay or straight. That doesn't matter. Her masculine style should have never prompted assumptions that she wasn't confident enough to stand up against. Many schools are making a huge mistake by focusing too much on gender identity and are enforcing toxic stereotypes without even realizing it. Actual education is becoming a low priority, which is very sad to see. I implore this board to reflect deeply on this matter and take decisive action to ensure that such injustices do not occur again. Please prioritize clear communication between students, parents, and the school so that we can rebuild the crumbling trust within the education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Sasha Lee.
Hi, I'm Sasha Lee. My address is W-684 Washington Court, N-92 here in Cedarburg. Good evening. My name is Sasha, and I address you today with a sense of urgency and concern in the light of the recent revelations regarding a sixth-grade student's experience at Cedarburg Middle School. As a member, as a board member of Gays Against Groomers, I echo the sentiments expressed by Jamie and stand in solidarity with the student and her family. What strikes me most profoundly about this situation is the apparent breakdown in communication. It is deeply troubling to learn that even members of this esteemed board were unaware of the challenges this girl was facing. It is such, if such vital information can elude those tasked with governing our school, what hope do we have of adequately addressing the needs of other students? Why did so many people assume her identity simply because of how she dressed? Communication is, must be the cornerstone of our efforts to create safe and inclusive environment for all. It is dangerous to keep secrets from parents and assume a child knows who they are in sixth grade. Did you know who you were in sixth grade? It's imperative that we establish transparent channels of communication, not only with our administrative circles, but also with the parents who entrust you with the care of their children. The case, this case serves as a stark reminder of the importance of timely intervention. We cannot allow another student to endure months of confusion and distress simply because administrative oversight or reluctance to, reluctance to address uncomfortable truth. Those of us in Gays Against Groomers strongly suggest a policy of immediate notification to parents in the event that any identity crisis of their child may be experiencing. Parents are not just stakeholders, they are allies in the journey towards creating a nurturing and supportive educational environment. I ask this board to take decisive action to rectify the shortcomings laid bare by this girl's experience. Let's pledge to prioritize open and honest communication, to foster a culture of empathy and understanding, and to ensure that no student ever feels marginalized or ignored within school walls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and in front we have Samantha Garson-Miguel.
That was louder than I expected by just touching it. Good evening. My name is Sammy. I live at West 55 and North 195 Woodmere Court. I'm coming to speak to you as a member of the Gays Against Groomers community and a part of the LGBT community. I am disturbed by the recent events, revelations surrounding a sixth-grader's experience at Cedarburg Middle School. The situation highlights not only the importance of communication, but also the insidious nature of harmful gender stereotypes that continue to pervade educational institutions across America. It is deeply concerning that this girl was assumed to be male simply because of her athletic style and tomboy nature, and she felt pressured to play along. This assumption not only perpetuates harmful stereotypes, but also gender and athleticism, but also underscores the pervasive nature of gender bias within our society. It is a stark reminder that even those entrusted with the care and education of our children can fall victim to these damaging stereotypes. What is perhaps even more alarming is the apparent lack of transparency surrounding the student situation. Why did the nurse and the school counselor fail to disclose her identity crisis and her to use the nurse's private bathroom out of confusion? This lack of disclosure only served to exacerbate her feelings of isolation and confusion, further highlighting the urgent need for open and honest communication with the educational community. As a member of this board, it is your duty to ensure that such injustices do not occur again. We must find a way to avoid situations where students are left to navigate their identity crisis alone without the support and understanding of those around them. However, in doing so, we must also prioritize education over gender identity politics. While it is crucial to create an inclusive environment where every student feels seen and heard, we must not lose sight of our primary goal, to educate and empower the next generation. Let's commit to finding a balance between fostering a supportive and inclusive environment and ensuring that our educational priorities remain at the forefront. I urge this board to take decisive actions to address the systematic issues that have been exposed by this girl's experience. Please prioritize open communication, challenge harmful gender stereotypes, and reaffirm your commitment to provide a safe and nurturing environment for all students. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other people on the list, but is there anyone else here who wishes to make public comment tonight? All right, so no one will move to the next topic, which is recommendations. Dr. Clark.
All right. This evening, we will be presenting eight recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is for the board to approve all full-time and part-time teacher contracts for the 2024-25 school year as presented.
It says Tony. Are you expecting?
Only if you had questions. Yep.
This was the one with the highlighted portions, right? Right, Dr. Clark?
Yes, it is.
Has that been updated at all to reflect what those are?
No, but Tony can share what the.
Is that okay to share what those, what those are denoting?
Sure. Yellow highlights under the last name and first names means they are new to the district or first here in the position. Green, you will see leaving the district, either resigning or retiring. The white blue are traveling teachers. Did they cover every color? Purple. Purple are building subs under the specific assignment. Light gray are traveling. And. I think there was a light blue also that was. Maybe it didn't show up on my printing, but it would be multiple buildings and new to the position or changed position.
Thank you. If that can just be added into this for being able to look back, that would be appreciated.
Sure. I think actually what he'll do is he'll just remove all coloring and just, because there's, the coloring serves no purpose for.
Sure, if that's, that's fine. If it's, that's for internal, that's fine.
All right. Do you need a motion?
Yes.
To approve the contracts. Do we have a motion to approve the contracts?
I motion to approve the contracts for full and part-time teachers for the 2024-25 school year as presented.
I will second that.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
I think we've got six yeses and one abstention. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right.
All right. The next contract, the next recommendation is for the board to approve the 2024-25 CISA-1 contract as presented. The contract is for the annual basic membership, basic service flat fee, and four seats at the Ozaki Community High School.
And how does this compare to last year? In general terms?
Very similar.
That's pretty general.
Well, they actually do, so they do a little bit of charging differently. So in prior years, there's certain groups that like I might belong to, technology would belong to, they pulled those out, and so we're not charged for those at those times because they require registration and those come separately. So the overall bill is less than what we've seen in the past, but the services is the same.
Great. Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the 24-25 CISA-1 contract.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, then we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Next, we are looking for the board to approve the policy updates for Policy 0100 Definitions, 0122 Board Powers, 0144.3 Conflict of Interest, 0171.3 Clerk, 2340 District Sponsored Travel, 2460.03 Independent Educational Evaluation, 2522 Library Instructional Media Centers, 5341 Emergency Medical Authorization, 5610 Suspension and Expulsion, 6235 Fund Balance, 6320 Purchasing, 6325 Procurement Federal Grants Funds, 6610 Student Activity Fund, 6611 District-Supported Sponsored Student Activity Accounts, 7230 Gifts, Grants, and Bequests, 7440 Facility Security, 7540 Technology, 7540.02 Web Content, Apps, and Services, 8120 Volunteers, 8310 Public Records, 8407 School Resource Officer Program, 8431 Preparedness for Toxic Hazards, 9130 Public Requests, Suggestions, or Complaints, and 9140 Citizens Advisory Committees. This is the second reading for each of the policies listed above. The first reading occurred during the most recent policy committee meeting, and all of these policies were forwarded to the full board for approval.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I have a comment. So I will be abstaining from this package of policies as the policies weren't looked at in their entirety. What was allowed at the previous policy meeting was the ability to only look at pieces that had been highlighted, though the entire policy had been noticed. That's not how things have been done in the past, where if a policy was noted, the entirety of a policy was looked at, not just highlighted portions. And there are quite a few of these policies that still have things that need to be changed and worked out, so I will be abstaining from voting on this package.
All right. Any more discussion?
Just a question. For this particular, I respect what Board Member Erickson has shared. I had a question insofar as what was read here. So we have a motion on the table right now to accept all of these policies and a second to that. Is that accurate? So I would offer a motion that we take the policies that, in my view, were not discussed to their fullest extent possible to that August 14th meeting that was approved earlier this evening. I certainly hear where Board Member Erickson is coming from. Obviously, we're all welcome to abstain and vote no, et cetera, but I believe many of these policies were decently discussed, with the exception of a few. So my amended motion, or second, you know, motion would be to send Definitions PO-0122 as well as PO-2522 and PO-9, let me find it here. Elizabeth, you might know it offhand. It was, it was the one that's. Might have been 9130. I was trying to double-check that really quick. But ultimately, I would like to make a motion for those handful of policies that didn't get the due discussion to be moved to that August 14th, rather than just passing everything as a whole.
Yeah, and I don't know that that's appropriate at this time, because I think the procedure would be that you would make the request to the, to the chair of the committee. I don't know if we noticed a discussion on what is going to be put onto the next policy committee meeting. So I don't know that we can do that second part, but we certainly can strip out the ones you don't want, you know, we can certainly take, entertain your motion.
To strike those from this pack for now, rather than potentially adding them, just striking them from this meeting's approval?
I think that would be the proper motion, yes.
Okay, so taking that into consideration, and thank you, Dave, for that. My, my motion would be to strike at this time PO-0100 Definitions, PO-2522, and then just give me one second to confirm that last one that I know, or I believe there was desire to have further discussion on, that we didn't. Let me just find it.
I believe it was the 9130.
9130, okay. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, so we have Ms. Kincaid's motion. Does that motion have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I did. As a policy committee member, I would, I'm in favor of approving the updates to the policies as noted in the initial motion, for that reason being that some of the highlighted things that we did discuss in the meeting are recommendations from NEOLDA, and if it's a recommendation from NEOLDA that we move to get approved today, I think it's important to move those updates in at this meeting. And as we discussed at the last policy committee meeting, that any further discussion we had on a policy that where we were just discussing the highlighted items mostly at that meeting, that we could email the policy committee chair and get those put on the agenda for the following meeting. You know, I had one or two items for that, so that was my plan, that we could approve them now, and then we can have them on the agenda for the next meeting as well. That's what I suggest.
Okay. Any more discussion on this, on Ms. Kincaid's motion?
Yes, I'll keep my motion as is. In regards to the process that we have as board members, whether committee members or alternates, I believe it's the same. Feel free to correct me, but my understanding is that a individual, if noticing in a policy is not reflecting something that they believe it should, given input from our community and their understanding of said policy, that they can certainly send that along to the chair for consideration. My understanding is that it would be placed on an agenda for discussion. That did not happen with a request I made last fall. I would like everyone to understand that I did go through those steps. An item that was important to me was not placed on this past spring policy meeting, and I am doing my best at this table to find a compromise, rather than go into depth about that.
We appreciate that, and, you know, that happens sometimes. So in Ms. Kincaid's motion, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Does not pass. There were two, four, and five against. So we revert back to the initial motion to approve these policy changes as presented. I don't recall if that, was that, was that motion, I made the motion, was it seconded? I don't recall.
It was.
Yes, okay. Is there further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The abstentions? Motion passes five to two. Item D, Dr. Clark?
All right. The next recommendation will be a first reading for Policy 5460 Graduation Requirements. Again, at the last board, the policy committee meeting, we had taken a look at that and the main. the main change in this was to add personal financial literacy for half a credit. That's a, now a state statute, I believe it's Act 60, and for all students graduating in the year 2028 and following years, they'll need to have that half credit. During the meeting, we recognize that if you now add all those credit requirements for English, math, science, social studies, health, and physical education, plus personal finance, that you would only need eight and a half credits for, to total the 24 credits required for graduation. We talked about it at the committees and said, yep, we should change that to eight and a half. The next day, when I was reviewing the notes and what we had done, I recognized, but that eight and a half credits is actually only for students graduating in 2028 and beyond. So next year sophomores, juniors, and seniors still will need nine elective credits. And so instead of trying to just put that all in there, I wanted to pull that out separately, make that known, so this can be the first reading of it, and then we'd look to have it approved at the May 15th board meeting. Again, I think this one's important to have done, we do need to have it before next school year.
All move approval? A second. Motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to add to that conversation for the next meeting around the area I brought up during the last policy meeting, graduation activities and ceremonies, I think it should be done before graduation happens this spring semester. A request to remove the denied participation in graduation activities for non-payment of fees. I think it's unfortunate that a student would be penalized for non-payment of fees when oftentimes it is not their duty to have those fees paid. I could see a possibility of withholding the mailing of the printed diploma for non-payment of fees, but just like we want to make sure that all students participate in full class field trips, all students who obviously don't have a disciplinary reason not to should be participating in graduation regardless of fees. So I would like to add that to the conversation regarding this policy.
What section of that policy is that?
That is-
Bottom page two, graduation activities and ceremony.
And has it always been like that?
It has always been like that, yeah. Yeah, I did check based off last time, we, we had connected with Principal Bowe, we've never, we've never denied anyone the ability to walk. It is a tool that the high school administration used to help encourage some families to, to pay, but nobody has ever been denied the ability to walk as far as Mr. Bowe knows, but just as a comment there.
I would be in support of a change, just really when we're thinking about policy and the specific wording, even though I, I hear what you're saying, that we haven't done this before, it hasn't come up before, that doesn't mean that it couldn't, and I think that there is space here where we shouldn't necessarily be using whether or not someone has financial resources at a given time as a tool. That doesn't strike me as helpful. So from my perspective, I would be in support of a change in language to that portion that Board Member Erickson highlighted.
Yeah, so the, the policies that a student may be denied, do you have any kind of guidelines that you, because I understand it's kind of used as a, a control to get these-
Well, I don't, I don't think it should be an option, period.
But do we have like a-
We do have precedents where we just, one of the policies that was passed was that students would not be denied access to participating in classroom field trips due to lack of funds.
But that was lack of financial-
This could definitely be construed.
I'm sorry.
No student should be denied the ability to participate in once-in-a-lifetime graduation activities due to fees. As I said, a compromise could be that there's a delay in the mailing of their actual diploma, but it should not deter them from being able to participate, and that language allows for that to happen in the future.
Could we, could we say, say activities, or for inability to pay fees instead of non-payment?
I think anything regarding fees needs to be taken out. No one should be barred from participating in graduation activities due to lack of fees. If you want to delay the mailing of their actual piece of paper, you know, until fees are paid, that's fine, but no one should be barred from graduation activities. That experience can't ever be replaced, and money should not be one of those things that keeps someone from something like that. I think it's inexcusable, and any language that would allow for that, even if we have not been doing that, is wrong.
Do we have a feel for, maybe it's a question from Mr. Bowe? How often is this used? I mean, what would happen if it's not? Is it, is it a big deal?
We have never used it in my time here.
Right.
Situation has existed, and we have not used this for a bench to withhold participation in graduation ceremonies to achieve payment.
The field trip issue was, it was for students who lack financial ability, and I think considering that we say it may be an option, I don't, and if we've never really used it, I guess I don't have an issue with it.
The issue that I would have is like, we haven't before, but you know, we're not saying it couldn't happen, right? So, so to me, a good compromise would be to say for inability to pay fees, because then you're kind of putting it, you're eliminating the situation where theoretically you'd have someone who was unable to pay fees.
Again, inability to pay fees, just blatant, you know, disregard and non-payment of fees. No student should be barred from participating in graduation activities due to money.
Okay, so do we have a motion then?
I made the motion to include looking at that, because obviously this is going to discussion, we can't vote on this policy, so that, that portion be added to the discussion for the May meeting.
We can make that change now, I mean, that's what this, because this is the first reading, so we could do that.
Yeah, I would like, I would like the statement to reflect a student maybe denied participation in graduation activities for disciplinary reasons, I would like and/or non-payment of fees struck completely.
But-
So that's her motion?
That's her motion, to, to remove that from the first reading.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
So can I just ask a question to be clear?
Yeah.
This is something I'd like to visit a little bit longer, and so in voting yes, is this just taking it back to further discussion or second?
Yeah, this is the first reading, right? So we would, I don't know that it would have any kind of permanent impact, because I, well, it could, I suppose, if we, if this was stricken from the first reading, and it was put back in the second reading, then what would, no, that would be okay, right?
Well, you really should have another one, so the purpose is always give people-
Two chances, right?
Yeah, to really solidify what, what they want the policy to say.
So there'd be another, another chance, giving us some time.
And again, from a timeframe, you know, as long as we get this done, I think before the start of the school year, we're, we're fine, so we've got until August.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. The motion is to strike the and or for non-payment of fees. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't hear, is that, is someone over here, say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, we got one, two, four ayes, five ayes, okay. Any opposed? Nay? Did you vote or not?
I did not, so I'm-
Are you abstaining?
Yes, I'll abstain.
So, so that, that motion passes five to one to one. All right. Did you get that?
No, Dave was the next to say.
Yeah.
So then we just need to make a motion on moving the whole thing forward to, now the complete edited version.
Oh, yeah, okay, so then, then, yeah, we'll take a motion to-
I think there was a motion in the second already, so now you just have to vote on-
Oh, okay, moving it to the second reading?
Yep.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously.
All right, so the next recommendation is for the board to approve the district's public records notice as presented. This recommendation has been forwarded from the PNF committee.
All motion.
I will second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we are looking for the board to approve the district public records request fee schedule, cost estimate as presented. This recommendation has been forwarded from the PNF committee.
All move approval?
I will second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on it?
Was this the same fee as last year? The 50?
Yes.
Was it bumped up? Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, the next recommendation is for the board to approve the resolution authorizing the fund, the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defecence of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated March 4th, 2019. This was discussed during PNF and recommended to be forward, did, and Mr. Ben Irwin is here to discuss and answer questions.
Yep, so tonight we bring a proposal to the board for the use of funds in our Fund 39 account, which is used for referendum debt management for the district. Over the last couple of years, the fund balance in Fund 39 has accumulated to a point where we can use some of those funds for debt defecence to help pay off future debt obligations and save the community interest costs over the life of the loan. We're looking at tonight's proposal that would use roughly about $3.6 million of that fund balance for debt defecence, and that would save roughly $1.8 million in interest costs over the life of the loan for the community. Fund 39 is separate from our operational budget, and so those funds can only be used for debt management and debt payments, and so that's why we're looking at this proposal tonight to reduce future interest costs.
I understand this was discussed in some detail at the personnel finance committee meeting, sorry?
At PNF, we went through a couple of scenarios of what this could look like in terms of using those funds. Some looked at different ways to pay it off that had a little bit less interest savings, but had different approaches for debt payments that are coming up earlier. In the end, the personnel finance committee approved the scenario that had the, that maximized interest savings for the use of these funds, and representatives from BARE were there as well, had to go over some other highlights of our debt management system and the district as a whole, kind of a school finance overview for the personnel finance members.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for the defecence of certain general obligation refunding bonds.
I will second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll be abstaining from this one. I, I greatly appreciate that so many of our board members attend committee meetings that they're not appointed to, and are able to come to the table with, you know, great insight into these things, having been able to ask questions. I wasn't, I wasn't at this meeting, I don't, so I still had some thoughts, and I don't feel they're necessarily appropriate for right now, because we did have several other members there, but again, thank you for, for this group of individuals that do attend so many meetings, so we have the opportunity to communicate with one another there. Thank you, Ben, for your work, and I'll be abstaining on this one.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, that one passes, six yes and one abstained.
Thank you. All right, the last recommendation, recommendation is for the board to approve the emergency connectivity fund, ECF technology purchases. These purchases will use the remaining $182,778 in the fund left from the 2022-23 ECF grant. This recommendation has been forwarded from the PNF committee.
I motion to approve the ECF technology purchase as presented. I'll second.
Ooh, who got there first? You can, you can advocate, it's fine.
Connie got it.
It's a rock, paper, scissors. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item nine, if I'm not mistaken, they're just committee reports. We're going to start with personnel and finance. Kate Netzel?
So we met on April 9th. The agenda items included the 23-24 budget and also the 24-25 budget, and included some good discussion on where we're headed and decisions that we're going to be looking at in the future. We also have a future meeting date of May 6th, 2024.
All right, thank you. Policy committee meeting, that's me, we discussed the policies that we've already discussed in this meeting and voted upon, that was about it. I think the next meeting is going to be the new one that we just approved, right?
August 14th.
All right, curriculum committee, Elizabeth Sharland?
We met April 11th. We had an update on the gifted and talented programming plan update. We discussed the McGraw-Hill Impact Social Studies lifelong learning skills and implementation of those in the new social studies curriculum, and we discussed the K through 8 English Language Arts professional development for Amplify and Into Literature, and our next meeting is May 8th, 2024.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, so we've reached the end of this agenda, so now I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, where we would, where, I'm going to read this verbatim, sorry. To adjourn into executive session to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government or mental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statutes. A, to consider teacher contract non-renewal preliminary notice for specific staff. We also, the motion also would be to go to executive session to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons pursuant to 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statutes. A, consider strategy slash planning regarding upcoming negotiations with Cedarburg Education Association, the CEA. And then we would reconvene into open session for the approval of the minutes from the executive session of February 21, 2024. Do I have a motion to move into executive session as such?
I would make a motion to move to executive session.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, we're going to take a roll call vote. Sharland?
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Netzel?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Career is an a as well. That motion passes unanimously, and we are adjourned to executive session, thank you.